Now. Thank you. I'm now going to start the screen share so we can begin the Bible studies. So the conversation runs as normal and as we have our conversation typically. And whatever language you can engage in, please do so. Um, I'm just going to go through the slides for today. Okay. Okay. So. The slides for today are the dispensations of man, and this is part two of that topic. And today's second of July, and the Bible passage is Exodus chapter twenty from verse three to seventeen. And the memory verse is Hebrew seven verse eleven.
So, yeah.
One passage. You shall have no Exodus twenty verse three to seventeen, and it's NIV. And this is the first eleven verses I've got here. You shall have no other gods before me. You shall not make for yourself an image in the form of anything above or on the earth, beneath or in the waters below. You shall not bow down to them or worship them. For I, the Lord your God, am a jealous God, punishing the children of this, punishing the children for the sin of the parents to the third and fourth generation of those who hate me. But showing love to a thousand generations of those who love me and keep my commandments. You shall not misuse the name of the Lord your God, for the Lord will not hold anyone guiltless who misuses his name. Remember the Sabbath day by keeping it holy. Six days you shall labor and do all your work. But the seventh day is a Sabbath to the Lord your God. On it you shall not do any work, neither you nor your son or daughter, nor your male or female servant, nor your animals, nor any foreigner residing in your towns. For in the, in six days, the Lord made the heavens and the earth, the sea and all that is in them. But he rested on the seventh day. Therefore, the Lord blessed the Sabbath day and made it holy. Honor your father and your mother, so that you may live long in the land of the Lord your God, in the land the Lord your God is giving you. Verse thirteen, you shall not murder, you shall not commit adultery, you shall not steal, you shall not give false testimony against your neighbor. You shall not covet your neighbor's house, you shall not covet your neighbor's wife, or his male or female servant, or his ox or donkey, or anything that belongs to your neighbor. That's the last verse. This is the word of God. Thanks be to God. Now, the memory verse is from Hebrews chapter seven, and it's verse eleven. And it says, if perfection could have been attained through levitical priesthood, and indeed the law given to the people established that priesthood, why was there still need for another priest to come, one in the order of Melchizedek, not in the order of Aaron? So that's a question for us. That's the memory verse of today. Hebrews seven verse eleven. Now, explaining the passage. Obviously, Exodus twenty is the passage where God gives mankind commandments as a guide for living righteous lives. And we can also see in the picture there, this is Moses receiving the ten commandments. So these laws were the laws which would guide righteous living on earth, was the first of this kind. Now, well, only time God ever gave us manna's like these anyway. Now, I see the commandments in three blocks of message. And I think some of the um Bible analyses also does the same. So the first block, that's verse three to seven, describes the sovereignty of God. Describes the acts of his sovereignty, and how we as God's children should respond to that sovereignty. So that first block, verse three to seven, is all about God's sovereignty, and what we need to do in response. It also demonstrates even the acts that he, that he takes because he's sovereign. And because he's sovereign, it means there's no one else like him. He owns, he owns everything. Now, the second block, which is verse eight to eleven, shows how we are to reverence the Lord our God. Now, if you're talking to a sovereign, you need to know how you're going to talk to him in a respectful manner. You can't go before a king or a queen of this world and talk disrespectfully. So you're going to talk to a sovereign, you must know how you're going to address him. And God gives us the guidance, because many of us, we appreciate that the fact that we're ignorant, even in fact, of course, even before, even at this time, people did not even know, you know, about God. So how much more how to address him? So God is giving the guidance here that, look, want to speak to me, speak to me in the right way, and this is how to do it. Now, the third block of, as I see here, is verse twelve to seventeen. And this shows how we need to behave to each other. So we're talking about behavior to God. Right? We're not talking about actually, this is how we as children of God should behave towards each other in order to conduct ourselves in a godly way. So if you want to live godly lives, if you want to conduct ourselves in a godly way, there's a certain way to behave towards one another. And this basically tells us about what that way is. The message of these commandments, because there's an overriding message for the commandments, the message of these commandments provides a full and complete guidance of how we as Christians should lead our lives. So these commandments basically are about the way those who love God are to live their lives. And we need to be very, very aware and sensitive towards that. Now, introduction. Mankind is very prone to making bad choices. Even when guided by conscience, these can often lead to calamity in different forms. Now, the picture I have here is Pinocchio. I don't know if many of us know the story of Pinocchio. This was a boy, a wooden boy that was crafted by a toy maker. And basically, what happened, a bit of magic brought it to life. So the wooden doll became, it became alive. But even then, it still knew that it was wood. So basically, it's as if a robot was created or knew that it was a robot. And this robot aspired to be more like a human being. The wooden doll wanted to become, wanted to become a proper boy. Then the, the, the law for that doll to become a boy was that, oh, it needed to be a good boy. No problem. What do I need to do to be good? Don't tell lies, you know, don't, don't have bad behavior, all those things that we know. So the, the character trait was that when Pinocchio did anything bad, especially when he told lies, his nose would start to grow. And the little cricket that you see on his nose there is Jiminy Cricket. Jiminy Cricket acted as Pinocchio's conscience. He would tell him that, look, this thing that you're saying is going to have consequences for you. This is wrong. This is bad. So Jiminy Cricket will be telling Pinocchio the right things to do. But still, Pinocchio, even though the conscience was telling him, was still doing the wrong thing. And in fact, many of us have a Jiminy Cricket in our head. But we still refuse to listen. Now, it's true, when we are telling lies, our nose does not grow long. But who knows what is happening in the spirit? What is happening to your soul? What is happening to your persona? What is happening to, you know, your spirit man? When you are conducting evil acts, is your nose growing long? In the spirit, is your ears, are they growing long in the spirit? Are they becoming like donkeys' ears? May God have mercy on us. Now, he said, I said, the same principle applies today. If we were to follow our conscience, we'll be making more righteous choices. So if we listen to our conscience, our choices will be much more righteous. This will lead to a more rewarding life as a whole. God has assured us he will never allow the rod of wickedness to fall on the lot of the righteous. So we have a promise from God. The lot of the wicked, the, the, the rod of the wickedness, rod of wickedness rather, is not going to fall amongst us because we are righteous. And we are able to receive a better quality of life because of that righteousness. Because God loves those who make righteous choices. Now, outline, continue from last week. So last week we talked about law, grace, and all those other ones. Now here we're continuing. With dispensation of law, which would often fall of man in the Garden of Eden, God chose to provide man with law. So basically, once Adam left the garden, there was a bit of a gap. Everybody did what they wanted to do, you know, and we got Cain killing Abel. And then God asking him, ah, where's your brother? And he's saying, ah, I'm a brass keeper. So because there was no law, people were doing what they wanted to do, but they still knew that things that they were doing were wrong. Now, God decided to give man laws to guide his behavior. The fear of consequence could be enough to deter man from sin. Please, if you're not talking, please can you mute yourself? I'm getting some ruffing from the microphone. We should not forget that the fall of man is led by a depraved spirit, soul and body. Man cannot act righteously unless guided by rules and fear of punishment or consequence. So basically, the rules that God gave us, which is the ten commandments, which is the law, basically are to guide our behavior, because with the law comes consequence for bad actions. The law basically introduces sin as a concept, and sin, the reward of sin is death. We know this. That's the consequence of uh, 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 sin. That's the consequence that we get from the law. Now, Romans seven verse fifteen to twenty-three tells us about how God gave the Israelites the ten commandments in Exodus twenty, and the background like the Torah and other books. So basically, you know, even though, yes, the commandments were only ten, you know, the Torah and the other books of Moses, and how the Pharisees and Sadducees developed, you know, uh, uh, um, almost six, not almost, they developed six hundred and nineteen requirements in terms of Christian behavior. So there were six hundred and nineteen guiding principles, I will call them, from the Torah, that needed to guide the life that we will be living as children of Israel. But we did not still fulfill the law. Because it says, for almost five thousand years, we have lived a style of life based on the consequence of sin and all its attendant judgments. And what that culminated in was just absolute and total shambolic chaos, a world that was dominated by sin. The law did not redeem us, unfortunately. So um it proved to be a faulty system. And I have here the skills of justice and the gavel of the law. Now, we are now under the dispensation of grace. Christ has come. He has taken away our sin. We're no longer being condemned by the weight of the sin that we have made. But, you know, we are, we are, because it says there's now no condemnation for those who are in Christ Jesus. Because we are in Christ Jesus, there's no condemnation for us. Since Jesus brought the fullness of grace to mankind, John one verse sixteen to seventeen, he became remission for our sins, granting us impunity from the consequences from the dispensation of the law. So that dispensation, even though it still exists, because Christ has come and he has paid the price, every single punishment that would have been accrued to me for my sin, because Christ has come, that punishment now goes to Christ. So I no longer live under the burden of the law, but I carry uh the glory of grace. I carry, you know, the abatement of grace, because Christ has come for me and he has paid the consequences of my sin. So I'm under, I'm under the umbrella of grace. Once we accept Christ into our lives, we take on his righteousness. So I am proper righteous. There was once a time when I was talking in church, and was talking about um, about this kind of, about this passage in fact. And I called myself, I said Saint Jideh, and, and, and people laughed, because everybody knows that I'm not a saint. It means if I know that I'm not a saint, but because Christ is in me, when I'm talking about Saint Jideh, I'm talking about the, 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 the Christ that is in me, that has removed all sin and has made me holy and fit for the purpose that God has called me to. It's not me myself doing it, but Christ who is in me has made me holy, has made me, it makes it appropriate for me to call myself a saint, even though the works of my hand, but you know, the grace of God has carried me and made me fit to be a saint. So by, by the grace of God, the righteousness of Christ is imputed to us, and we are no longer viewed as sinners by God. Because Christ died for us, we no longer need the sacrifices of lambs or goats to free us from the consequences of our sin. So there is no more need for sacrifice. There's no need for me to bring a lamb, to bring a goat, sacrifice at the altar. No! Christ has sacrificed himself, the blood of Jesus, I'm caught in the blood of Jesus, and by that blood I am redeemed from my sin, as is everybody who is under the dispensation of grace. And the picture I have here is about amazing grace. Amazing grace, how sweet the sound that saved a wretch, because I'm a wretch, like me. I once was lost, but now I am found. I was blind, but thank God, to God be the glory, but now I see. Amazing grace. We all know and love the song. So next week is this, is this dispensation of grace is going to go into fuller detail. I've just touched on it now, but it will be elaborated upon next week, and the passage is Ephesians two, verse one to ten. And please don't forget to check us out on our YouTube channel, which is New Common and Bible Study. You will see quite a lot of material there. God bless you, and God continue to be with you in Jesus' name. And I hand over to our presenter, our, our moderator, sorry, um brother Larry.
Good evening, sir. Um, good evening, everyone. Happy Sunday. Happy new month. May it be a blessed month for us all in Jesus' name. Um, we've entered into the second half of the year. I pray that God's presence continues to abide with us, and we have a successful year in Jesus' name. We're looking at, in our topic today, dispensations of man. Uh, this topic is an interesting one, because I've just finished um the certificate class for the Bible college, and um they taught us about these um dispensations. And it's interesting to see the periods. The dispensations almost represents different periods. The first is of the conscience, so how God allowed us to live by our conscience and make decisions and, you know, expect us to make the right decisions and stuff like that. And then, and then after came the dispensation of the law, which is there, we, as we read in the passage today, the, the commandments. Uh, um, and God appointed rulers, judges, kings over, over nations. Um, so, so they can be decision makers, and those who either handed out punishments or rewards, or he brought order through law in this, in that dispensation. And as we heard, the third dispensation, dispensation of grace, which we will treat next week, but um the first question I sort of have in mind touches on uh the dispensation of grace. But please, before I, I go further, I would like to go back to our presenter. Um, sir, good afternoon, sir. Thank you so much for assisting with this in such short uh notice. Um, please, from studying um this passage, from working on this passage, what, what is your observation on the topic in general? What would you like to expand on? Your, your opinion on this topic to start with, please?
Thank you so much. Um, I think this is a really important topic. Because I think that um many of us do not really understand the period in which we are in and how we have managed to get here. I think because we have grace now, many of us kind of take that grace for granted. And I know that um we had a standing joke amongst the Bible teachers, where we used to talk about um that you cannot uh continue to abound in sin and expect grace to multiply. Just because you have grace, that does not give you license to sin. So um I think that we need to really understand the principles that are guiding us today. Because it will really help us, it will really help to improve the quality of our Christian lives. If you love God, and you know, if you love God truly, you will act in a way that demonstrates that love. The demonstration of your love for God means that you will not sin, because God does not want you to sin. But when you do sin, because you are a human being, it is then that the grace of God covers you. Because Christ has come and has died for you, and therefore there is no condemnation for those who are in Christ Jesus. So if we understand that approach and apply it to our lives, I believe that these, understanding these dispensations will allow us to, to have a better Christian lifestyle. I missed.
Thank you so much, sir. Just a quick question for the floor, please. How far does this um grace extend to in terms of if we do sin, then we are covered by, I know next week is grace, like, if we're not careful, we'll talk about this grace thing. How far does it extend in terms of if I sin once, twice, three times, there are no consequences? How, how, how many times do I have to sin? Um, please, this question might sound crazy, and the reason I'm asking is this. Is this grace available? Only if I am, if I mistakenly, or if I unknowingly, it's not unknowingly, but if I, not like I'm sinning uh with, with the obvious knowledge and with the full chest of, yes, mushi, will you fed be? And um the, will the grace still cover me for that? Or will it, will it um not cover an unrepentant person? Would that grace not um extend to that person? But in other words, I'm trying to ask, is this grace only available for Christians? Or is it available for all, for all humanity um in general? That, that's the, that's the first question. Please, let's have a think on that. The second one is this, if man, this is from the introduction, if man been able to make good choice as guided by his conscience, if man had been able to make good choices as guided by his conscience, he would have been spared all the attendant calamities as witnessed to date. So also, if any of us today would choose to follow after righteousness, such a person would be spared the calamities in the present world, because God will never allow the rod of wickedness to fall on the lots of the righteous. Hallelujah. This passage that I've just read. If that's the case, how can we explain what happened to Job? When God pointed him out to say, that person there is a righteous person. God spoke highly of him and then gave room for him to be tested. How can we explain that? The reason I'm asking is this, many people who try, many people who live so well. And I'm trying, I'm asking this question so we can go deeper in our knowledge and understanding of God, and because I see many Christians who try their best, but are going through affliction. How can we explain that? When this, when this passage is saying that God will never allow the rod of wickedness to fall on the lot, on the lot of the righteous? That's my, that's second question. Baba, um, Daddy Ubutimiri raised his hand, please, sir, if you, if you want to take the floor. Um, I think you wanted to answer the first question. Is it that?
Yes, good evening. Thanks for the opportunity. Actually, I'm not, I'm just, I don't you breaden now, but uh uh, we, about the question that you asked, uh, we all know that God commanded us uh not to sin. And you have just explained it to us, that uh it's not a privilege for us that is to sin, and at the same time be expecting that uh the Lord will forgive us, that is, there's something intentionally. It's quite different doing things without uh knowing it all, it did it that any uh intention of doing it, that is that. Please, Braden, if you permit me a little, I, I, I want to ask a question. That's the reason why I lift my hands up. If I can, if I can do it. Yes.
Yes, please.
Is, we go to the third book of Exodus, chapter twenty. With the red to us, in chapter twenty. I've asked this question on many occasions, but I'm here to receive a reply. The Lord God commanded us saying we shall not make for ourselves an idol or any form of anything in heaven above or beneath the earth and the water. We shall not, or below, we shall not bow down to death. We cannot worship death. Because I am a jealous God, or any image whatsoever. This is the commandment given unto us. Please, Braden, then why is it so that we carve image or images? That this Mary, this is Jesus Christ. And we do bow down to it, because our logicist kind who told uh the Pharisees, when they were talking about the marriage. So he told them that in heavens, they are not given marriage, and that get, and not get being married, we shall all be like the angels. And he said, don't you remember that when Moses was uh talking to God, they, they used to say it, God of Abraham, God of Moses, and God of Jacob. That is to say, our God is a living God. Thanks, and God bless. This is my question.
Thank you, sir. Thank you so much, sir, for the question. Um, please, do we have any hands um to, to respond to that? The, the main question is with regards to images, when God said we should not carve out images for, to worship or to bow down to, how do we, how then do we explain the images of Jesus and Mary? Sir, under that question, would the cross also fall under that?
Yes, this is the question that they ask us, we could go and have a church all over. That we do, we do, about the cross, for to me personally, it's acceptable. Because cross means, it, it is a sign that this, that is representing the time of our logicist Christ. He died on the cross, and at the same time, we believe that here is, here is our logicist Christ who served for us. So far, we are seeing that that reminded us of our logicist Christ, that we should not sin, because he died for us because of our sins. This is my own personal uh opinion, so.
Okay, sir. Thank you, sir. Please, do we have any, any, any volunteers for, for answering on the question, please? With regards to um images?
Okay, you know what? Let me, let me volunteer to just kind of open this up a little bit. So I think the question that Alaba Ubutimiri is asking is some, a question that has troubled many of us with regards to the way we, we worship. So first of all, you know, um when we go to church, we have a, a habit of, you know, um bowing before the altar. And some of us even have a habit of bowing when the crosses are passing. But But I want to be very, very clear. When we are, you know, bowing to show respect. For the presence of God as represented by the cross. We are not worshiping that image. We are not making that image into our God. Just because I went to the altar today and I, you know, when I was approaching, I bowed, I showed reverence. I, 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 you know, don't make it that, oh, that place is my God because I'm at home now. And I'm still worshiping God. I'm at home now, I'm still showing reverence, even though I'm not, you know, uh, uh, in church. So people who make the cross or an image their God. They tend to carry those things around with them. And it's only when they're in that place, when they see those things, that they then say that, oh, you know, they're worshiping God because I'm bowing for it. No, and even they ascribe power, they ascribe, um, yeah, you know, behavior and characteristics to those things. I don't ascribe any power to the, the, the cross that we take. I don't ascribe any power or any, any characteristics to the altar where I worship. I recognize that is a place where absolutely I can meet God. That does not make the altar itself God. I'm not worshiping the altar. So we need to be careful to show the distinction between acts of reverence. Acts of respect and um worshiping. My further point is going to be this. So our father read the creed today as he normally reads the creed. And every time uh he mentions the Father, the Son and the Holy Spirit. Tend to, you know, again, show reverence and just bow. It doesn't mean that I'm now worshiping the creed. But showing reverence for what we are, showing reverence for God, you know, by what, when we, when we mention his name. Is completely different from worshiping an altar or anything like that. So that's just the way that I'm going to start the conversation off. And I hope that with the hands that you now have up, I can see people hopefully adding to it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Uh, please, can I have Pastor Auntie Jumakay, please, ma? And then after that, uh, Mother Aketobidema, after you, um, after Pastor Auntie Jumakay, please.
Okay, I'll go to everybody. Um, I, the thing is, um. It's a bit challenging because what you have is doctrine and dogma. So the challenge is everyone has a way of worshiping God. The, the, the difficulty is when they now take it out of context of what the Bible says. So for example, the image of Mary, you know, some actually believe in that image. Now, we don't know whether it's right or wrong. The Bible doesn't, the Bible doesn't say it's right. But because it's what they have come to believe. God has not said it is wrong. Therefore, as a man, we, we do not, we are not in a position to say that the way they are worshiping is wrong. So we just need to be a bit mindful when we're looking at other people's way of worshiping God. Because at the end of the day, God is interested in what is in your heart. That is the most important thing to God. So whether you bow down to the altar or you don't bow down to the altar, or you bow down to the cross, or you don't bow down to the cross. It is what is in your heart that really matters to God. So this discussion we're having is, is a lightning. But we just need to be very mindful that we don't pull that other way, the way other people are worshiping God. Just because we don't understand the way they worship. I hope that's a bit, that's just my little bit that I want to contribute. I might talk again later. Thank you.
Thank you so much, ma. Um, Mother Akimito, with the mark.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, it might just a question. Because um they say that. You know, people should not be carrying a cross image of uh Jesus Christ. Because though you went on the cross. And it was buried and resurrested, so we shouldn't uh carry a cross with the image of Jesus. Because it's no more on the cross. So they said the cross was empty. So in that bit, I started, you know, thinking, wishes wish. Some people said it's just to, it's just a remembrance to remind people that was on the cross. That's why some people said, no, it should be an empty cross. Even if I tell you once to uh like use cross. It should let your cross be an empty cross, not cross with an image. Because the Lord Jesus is no more on the cross. So I just want, you know, um, somebody to protect me on that.
Um, okay, I'm gonna move on to um Mrs. Quaymaster, ma.
Okay, Mrs. Quaymaster, it's me, myself. And thank God for all. Um, well, just to add to what has been said earlier on. Um, if we compare. The aspect of bowing, like uh, but I didn't mention earlier on. It is not about that cross that is being held. It is about appreciating God. It's a reminder of what happened. Compared with um when Aaron did the modern image. You remember how he introduced that image to, to the Israelites? He said, behold, this is the God that brought you out of. So we can see the difference between this is good Christ here on the cross. And Christ is in heaven. This is just, if we were, it's like even the, the pictures, we do have pictures of ourselves, we do have things that we, we make up and all those things. And as we do not worship them. Well, that is for me. I don't worship them. It is a reminder of what Christ did. If you have it as an empty one, which is without the, which if you have just the crucifix. It is a reminder that it's no longer on the cross. But don't forget that the cross itself initially is not just about, is not just about Jesus Christ alone. It was, um, am I being, are you still hearing me?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm going to be freezing a little bit. So, yeah, so the cross was not only about Jesus Christ initially. It was Jesus Christ that brought the blessings that we now got from the, from the cross. The cross has always been there. They've been using it to, to punish uh thieves, rob, armed robbers and all those things. But by the grace of God, that cross has now become, became, is now became something that is of, of treasure to us. So it's just a reminder, as long as we know it within our hearts. If you look at most of the churches that, well, that's for me now, if you look at most of the churches that, that do not have any, any significance there. Or, or any, or anything that shows that it's a church or something. You can always find, in fact, well, that's for me, you will always feel the difference. So and uh, no, I'm not, let me just say, it's not only CNNs that uses cross. Different, too many denominations, they use it, Anglican use it, Catholic uses it. Um, even there was one this pastor in the US, very popular, by the, the, Dr. Michael Yusu. He had, he was, he even defended it, if I remember, if I remember. When it was, there was an argument about removing the cross from the, from the poopage, I mean, from the front or from the altar. And he said, this is a reminder of what Jesus did. So that is just what I can say to you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, Momi Padja, and then we'll move to. Is that uh? Prophetess Adlagudaima, is that you? After?
I don't think it's her. No, I think it's um, uh, okay.
Okay, okay. So Momi Padja first and then. All right. Okay. Oh, sorry, ma. So ma, you go after Momi Padja, ma. Please. Thank you, ma. Momi Padja, please.
I think with us. First, it depends on the doctrine of the church. Secondly, in, in the church, there are many members. And we are not at the same level of faith. Some, if they don't see the cross, they don't believe. Like you said, it's a reminder. But having said that, I think we should go over beyond seeing the cross. It's just like um. In the olden days, they were carrying the act of covenant. Are you still telling me that? It's still in the act of the covenant. Because I see myself as the act of covenant. I see my heart as the altar of God. Anywhere I pray that I'm setting up an altar for God. And so this is why I said it depends on the level of your. Of your faith. And your relationship with God. And then this grace we are talking about. There are loose and lost, like uh the presenter said, you cannot remain in sin. And even the Bible said, I ask grace to multiply, when I can marry. So in other words, before you can assess grace, you have to do a way with sin. And what that means is repentance. You have to do a way totally. You have, sometimes you have to make restitution. Because if you see David when he sings, even though he's falling from one sin to another, but it's not the same sin. You repent of one, then you don't go back to it. And then you don't deliberately go into sin. And say, oh, grace is there for me. Eh, one year, she a moment that could be that. I think this is where the knowledge of God is really, really important and the word of God. Because tell me, if you sin against the Holy Spirit and you want, you are talking of grace. So you, we have to know what God, what goes along with grace. It's just like um, um salvation, even though salvation is there, but it's not for everybody. Because you have to believe, you have to accept Jesus Christ as your Lord and Savior. Because you, before you can have the salvation. So there are rules and guidelines to attain. This salvation and this grace. This is what, this is from my own point of view. I, that knowledge, you have to seek. What do I have to do? What can I do? What can I, can I not do? And not only that, even this grace. If you, if you accept that this. You have to do something to retain it. So that you don't lose the grace. I think I'm making sense.
Yes, ma. Um, we, we have two more. We have, we have two more. So sorry, ma, please, ma, if you don't mind, I'll, I'll need to move on to them quickly.
Oh, that's okay.
And then we'll move on to our, uh, thank you, ma. We'll move on to our summaries. Um, please, um. Okay, ma. Um, Prophetess Ma, um, Mother. What do you mean? Ma, please, um, Prophetess. Yes, ma, please, ma, if you can speak, ma. Thank you, ma.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Um, we thank God for his grace for us. When we talk about, first of all, talk about the um images in the church, we should always remember that. Um, this Christianity that we, that, that we are into, some people started it for us. And when we remember that most of these people as well, they come from the Jewish tradition and they become Christians, followers of Christ. When they started building temples, especially when Constantine helped the Christians, the early Christians. You know what he saw? He believed in the cross because it was the cross that he saw that helped him to um conquer the war before him. So such a person, you will not expect that if he now used his money during his emperor to build temples. He will not, you will not blame him for now putting the sign of the cross in there because that is the belief, that is what God has showed to him. And they continue to do it. So when we come to the altar now and we see crosses and we bow, we are not actually bound to those crosses or the, or the light. Because when the light is there, it's, this made us to understand that is the light that represents God. So you are like, the presence of God is here, you are bound to God. This is the cross on which he died for me, just to remember. So that when you know, you can always pray as well, you will die for me on the cross or whatever prayers you want to say. Is to show that this is the sacred house of God. All these images are there. When you go to other big churches, in, in the stained glasses as well, they have so many things that, they are not for us to worship. They are for us to see and remember and to reflect on what's, this, with the story that is attached to them. And then when you come about talking uh of the grace of God, the grace of God is, before I go to that one. Um, I've just, I, I think I had Momi Padja say that, the sin that you um make that um, uh, that you commit intentionally knowingly. That is not forgivable. God will forgive sins that we will ever sin. The only one that the Bible said God will not forgive is the sin against the Holy Spirit. If now you sin even intentionally knowingly, fully knowing that that is wrong that you've done it. And later you go to repent, God is so merciful and he will forgive. Well, that is why they said, but just because you know God will forgive you, you don't continue to do such. And again, grace is for everybody. Everybody that comes to Christ, that believe in the work of salvation, in the life of that Christ brings to us. And say, okay, Christ came, he died for me, I believe in him, I will follow him. Grace is for you. If you don't believe, there is no way that grace will work for you. We have to believe and grace will work for us. That was the Bible says.
Thank you, ma. Thank you, ma. You know that sin party. The one, I don't, sorry, the reason I laugh is because we, yes, we, we. Sins are forgivable and the grace part is there. The, the part, because the human character. You know, from what you just said, yes, and from the scriptures, it says. The, the one where we can put on record that God says is unforgivable is grieving the Holy Spirit. Sins against the Holy Spirit. But if I decide in my heart that I'm going to commit. A sin and I've already predetermined the sin in my heart. And then I also predetermined that, God, I won't do it again after this. Please, how do you expect that? How do you explain?
Let us take for example, let us take for example, Cain.
It's a predetermined sin, ma.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Let us take Cain, for example, Cain, the brother of Abel. He had proposed in his mind, in his heart that he's going to kill his brother. Cain was knocking at his door and God asked him, where is your brother? He said, am I my brother's keeper? God said to him, Cain is knocking at your door. He was now supposed to redraw from committing that sin. Because God sees his heart, God read it, so God knew what was in his heart and he knew it was what he planned. So, but when God now corrected him, like many times, the Holy Spirit will come to us and will convict us. That this is what we are doing, this is not what we are supposed to do. We must listen to that Holy Spirit that is convicting us and we must do what is, you know, what is right, rather than the negative thing we want to. That was why, you know, the question that was asked was, who is this grace for everybody? That was why I just said that. But then I continue to say that we must not continue to sin because, no, there is grace for us. When you continue to sin, there is always punishment for it. In the Samnite night, he said, the Moses, Aaron and so, uh, the, 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 the God called unto God. God answered their prayers. But imagine the sins that they have committed, they didn't know, they got punished for it. So we have to be careful. God is a merciful God. He's, he's, he loves us so much. But when now you know what is right and what is wrong and you are choosing to do the wrong at all times. You know, it's like a parent have want this child and then again he does it. I would just, there is something, there is, there, 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 we have to do something about it, isn't it? Just to make sure he doesn't do it again. God help us.
Thank you, ma. Thank you, ma. Um, Momi, you should know, you should know, ma, and then.
Uh, thank you. Uh, just a quick one about this issue of images. Uh, you remember Jesus in his days used to speak in parables. What their sense of that parable? He wants to bring home, he wants his listeners to understand what he, he was talking about. As a farmer, he will speak about seeds and all this and all that. So it's, it, 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 I believe that these images we are talking about, the cross or whatever that we use. Is just to remind us to bring home. For instance, teachers, especially those who teach children. They use images so that the children will understand. If they talk about pencil, they will show them pencil, what does pencil do? If they talk about plants, they will show them plants, what, you know, how to grow plant, how to water plant and things like that. This is just to bring home, to make them understand. So when we are looking at the cross. So when we are looking at the cross, it is not that cross you are worshiping. You are, you, you are, you are, you, you, you begin to remember what Christ has done for you on that cross. For instance, in that 121 that we read, say I look up to the mountain, where does my help come from? Is it the mountain that will give you help? That mountain is pointing to heaven, to God, that is to look up. It is not the mountain, but pointing you to where, uh, who created that mountain. So images are not to be worshiped and we are not worshiping images, but we are, you know, it's reminding us, when you look up to the cross, you remember Christ, what he has done and we appreciate what the grace you are enjoying in your life. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma. Quamastha, please, sir.
Yeah, thank you very much. I just want to add to what was said about um, uh, the raising question about sinning and that um, uh, grace or forgiveness. I think the major issue there is, okay, for us, for a thief or an armed robber, they premeditate whatever they want to do, they do everything that they want to do as it comes. But grace still allows them once they repent. The big question is, for us that have now been given the grace that have been redeemed, if we not take that grace, uh, uh, some, the avenue for us to be, to now committing sin and doing it. The Bible says that we are now, we are now again crucifying Jesus Christ to the, to the cross again. So that should, yes, we may ask for forgiveness. But the question is, are you, did you, did you deliberately commit that sin? Was there any thought within you that says that do not, when, when you spoke in the morning about, about evil? Sometimes when evil comes, e, e, evil will push you to the extreme that what you do not want to do, you find yourself doing it. But God sees all things. If you struggle and it's, the, the, your, some people still argue that, oh, God, now, there's no, the Bible says that there's no, we will not come, come across any other power, the challenges that is beyond our, our power. But sometimes power pass power. May we not fall into, into the, into the den of, 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 of the evil ones. May God continue to preserve and protect us. So what we should always hold on to is this thing that I'm going to do, once we have that provision within us that this is sin, I think we, we need to strive at all, at all point, at all cost to move away from it, whether there is, whether they're going to get forgiveness or not. It is not, it is a, it is a waste of result, of, 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 of opportunity. When we know, we will, we know that we're going to be forgiven and then we commit that sin. Then that is, that is a bad, if you are forgiven, you know that you will never go without punishment. So may God please help us and just, that we should just identify what is right and wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Just quickly, I'll go through the comment, um, a couple of comments and that's it from me. Um, from Uncle Kulefakula, he said, John three fourteen, just as Moses lifts up the snake in the wilderness, so the son of man must be lifted up, that everyone who believes may have eternal life in him. Isaiah eleven ten, on that day, the roof of Jase will stand as a banner for the peoples, the nations will seek him and his place of rest will be glorious. Banners are not hidden, they are visible to everyone. We need to make a distinction between worshiping the cross and the one hung on the cross. They are two different things. Lastly, um, this is from Prophetess Mother, um, Prophetess Mother Kenny, please. And it says, God sees our hearts, he will pay everyone back with, with whatever coin you put down. Be careful, the structures are there. Christians are now newborn and be the new man following the steps of Christ. And this is our Bible study for today. Thank you so much, everyone. I'll hand over to the summary.
Thank you. I thought Wole Taya was gonna assist us with the summary. But she might not have got my message. Okay, no problem. So our summary today, basically, so I think the main discuss, the main focal point for discussion today was about grace, first of all, and what that means for us in terms of our behavior and how we can apply grace into our lives, even though we receive the warning, the warning about not sinning and expecting to expect, um, expecting to continue to bow, bow in grace. So we need to be mindful of in all of our behavior, even though we have grace today, we do not attempt to abuse that grace by committing sin. We also talked about um, our styles of worship. And something was mentioned with regards to the reverence that we have and whether we're bowing to graven images. Um, and again, there was some comment on not judging anyone or any particular doctrine, but recognizing the fact that what we are doing is just being respectful towards the cross and what it represents because um, it was said that we see these crosses as a memorial, it's, so we are, we remember, we see the cross, we see Jesus on the cross and remember the pain and sacrifice that Jesus has endured for us and for our sins. And you know, we're showing reverence there, but that's, we're not worshiping that graven image. Regardless of what is on the cross, and some people say that we do, they shouldn't even have Jesus on the cross because maybe it's putting him there a second time, but I want to offer that even that is just a representation. Um, and it's our sin, and somebody also said that if we continue to sin, you know, willful pursuit of sin, we are nailing Jesus to the cross. It's our sin and our behavior that can nail Jesus to the cross a second time, not any graven image that we um, create of him. And someone also made the distinction that, look, Aaron, when he mo, when he, when he produced the golden calf and he said, see Israel, this is the calf that brought you out from Egypt. And obviously, we all know that that was never the case. And that's, and they began to bow down and worship that calf as if it were God. And that is completely different from what we do, where we show reverence um, by what that image represents. And that is our Bible studies for today. May God continue to be with us all in Jesus' name. Amen. Can we ask um, Pastor Fakula, please to pray for us this evening? And then our Father Martins to give us grace.
Our son, Father, we thank you this evening. We worship your holy name. We appreciate you for guiding us, for teaching us, for being in your presence. Father, we glorify your holy name. King of kings be exalted in the mighty name of Jesus.
Amen.
We ask that uh, even as we have studied and learned a lot from you uh, this evening, Lord, we ask for strength, we ask for power, to be able to avoid sin, to be able to live a righteous life. Lord, we pray, Father, that you grant unto us in the mighty name of Jesus.
Amen.
Our life into your hand, we commit our ministry into your hand. Lord, everything that you have called us to do, Lord, we pray that we'll continue to do it with diligence, with understanding, in the mighty name of Jesus. We commit into your hand, Lord. We pray, Father, that we shall not fall into the hand of sin, that sin bear over every one of us in the mighty name of Jesus. We thank you because you are a father, we thank you because we know that this week will be a week of blessing and testimony will be following in the mighty name of Jesus. Thank you, ma. We ask, we give you all the glory and we give you all the honor in Christ's name we have prayed. Amen.
Our Father Martins, Baba Martins, please give us the grace, sir.
Thank you. With the grace of our Lord Jesus Christ, the love of God, the sweet fellowship of the Holy Spirit, abide with us, go with us, lead us in all, everything that we will be doing all through the week, now and forevermore. Amen.
Amen. Amen, Jesus.
Many.
Praise the Lord.
Lord.
Praise the Lord.
Hallelujah.
Praise the Lord, oh.
Hallelujah.
Thank you so much, everyone. God bless us.